Reese Shaw.
Here.
Tim Stahl.
Here.
Terry Wilber.
Here.
James Crouse.
Here.
Morse Sorevello.
Here.
Dan Pfeiffer.
Here.
Frank Cissell.
Welcome to the Senate.
Thank you. Please stand at your seats. As we come together today, let us be grateful for the opportunity to live in America and to serve our community, for the chance to make a difference in the lives of our loved ones and the citizens of Oswego County, for the gift of each day and the company of good and decent people, and for the examples of courage and dedication they live out each day. Amen. You can please turn for a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've all seen the minutes from the May ninth meeting. The motion. Approved, sent in by legislator Holt. All in favor?
Aye.
Foe. Carry. At this time, I'd like to call on the Economic Development Committee Forward along with Representative for Colonial Cooperative Extension and the Farmland Protection Board. Along with Mr. Holt.
On the count of three. One, two, three. And a second. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and read this then. Oswego County Legislature, oh, legislature, sorry, proclaims June twenty nineteen as Dairy Month. Whereas June is the month when nature bestows upon us her most nearly perfect weather, and so it follows that-
Nearly.
And so it follows that June is also the most fitting month to celebrate milk, nature's most nearly perfect food. And whereas the wide and dairy agriculture of New York State directly and indirectly employs almost half a million people, with dairy farming ranking first in agricultural income. And whereas the dairy industry in Oswego County is a significant contributor to over ninety-four thousand acres of agriculture land, with market value of land, buildings, equipment, and cattle worth one hundred ninety point five million dollars. And whereas June is traditionally identified with the delicious idea of eating refreshing and nutritious dairy food. Now therefore, I, James Weatherf, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, and on behalf of the entire legislature, do hereby proclaim June of twenty nineteen as Dairy Month in Oswego County, and propose a salute to milk, the beverage that has helped our children grow taller, our adults to become more vigorous, and our senior citizens to enjoy the longest, most productive lives in the history of the world.
Sure. As Chair of the Farmland Protection Board, it's our job to make sure we're protecting our farms out there, all of our farmland, and making sure that we protect the backbone of our economy here in Oswego County, which is agriculture. As everybody can see on our seal, we have a plow on the bottom, that's the backbone of this county, and it always has been. I want to thank our dairy princesses for joining us tonight, everything that our, yeah, well, and then everything that Cooperative Extension does for our agricultural community. Right now, as many of you may or not be aware, not only with the weather, but dairy farmers are really struggling, along with everybody in agriculture. But definitely, if you see a dairy farmer out there, don't be afraid to thank him for what they're doing, because he has food today because of that farm. So remember, no farms, no food. With that, I'll turn it over to our dairy princess.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Claye Panoski. I am the Dairy Princess for Oswego County. This is Heidi Wall. She is one of our junior dairy ambassadors. As part of our program, we also would like to recognize a few of our members who aren't able to make it today. We have Claye Panoski, who is also one of our ambassadors. Is Melo Ropponi, who is our alternate dairy princess. Katie Edwards, who is another junior dairy ambassador. And Lena Edwards, who is our dairy maid. We would like to thank the lunch later for our advice this evening. Dairy farming is one of the oldest industries in Oswego County. We have thousands of acres of farmland open for cultivation in Oswego County. We have farms that not only produce milk, but process and sell their own dairy products here locally and in other counties. Our dairy corps provides educational programs to children in all districts of Oswego County, and also with access to a healthy lifestyle. Over the past couple of weeks, as a team, we have already visited several schools throughout the county, and we look forward to visiting many this week. We appreciate everything that the farmers do in the American Dairy Association Northeast. Without them, this program will not be possible. Be sure to follow us on Facebook and Instagram, Oswego Dairy Promotions, to see all the activities we do throughout the year.
I would like to make a notice that we raise, we raise our hands in brandy, but we lay beautifully.
At this time, I'd like to invite the EDP Committee to stay up here along with the Environment Council Coordinator Erica Schreiner, Team Advisor Jamie Hefty, and Plaski High School Environment Council Team.
Guys weren't quiet during the Environment Fund.
Can I have everybody down this way, please?
On the count of three. One, two, three. And a second. One, two, three.
All right, the Oswego County Legislature, in recognition of Oswego County and Environment Fund first placed Plaski High School. Whereas a community is created by the hearts of its citizens and sustained by those dedicated to its prosperity and inspired by the special heroes of everyday life. And whereas the Plaski High School competed in the twenty-ninth annual Oswego County Environment at Selkirk Shore State Park in the town of Richland on May second, twenty nineteen, placing first in overall performance out of eleven county teams. And the Plaski High School competed in the New York State Environment on May twenty-second and twenty-third at Hobart William Smith College in Geneva, placing ninth out of forty-six teams in the state, and also placing first overall in the category of forestry. And Environment, Environment, coordinated by the Oswego County Soil and Water Conservation District, is a hands-on outdoor environmental education competition that tests the knowledge of students in subject areas of aquatics, current environmental issues, forestry, soil, and land use, and wildlife. And the Plaski team was made up of, oh boy, Ben Carduella, my folks are not, Josh Carduella, see, I did that one. Danny Hefty, Daniel Novak, Dylan Ochino, and accompanied by advisor Jamie Hefty. Whereas such an example of dedication and commitment to our environment is inspiring and deserves our proud attention and community recognition. Therefore, be it resolved that I, James Weatherf, Chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, and on behalf of the entire legislature and the people of Oswego County, do hereby recognize the Plaski High School and commend each student, team advisor, and families for their efforts, guidance, and support that bring this youthful inspiration to our gratefulness.
We have Erica Schreiner as our county soil and water district educator, and we're really fortunate to have her, so we would make her-
I'd just like to thank the legislature for taking the time to recognize these exemplary students. There's a fifth member who isn't here tonight, but four of them are graduating, two of them are going on to Clarkson University, and two are going on to the School of Environmental Science and Forestry. The other one will be back to be another team for next year.
All right, thank you. Legislator Wilber, the Assistant Public Speaker. There are none. Thank you. Moving on, reports of county officials. Legislator Lockwood. Reports of numbers.
I'd like to just wanted to say hi.
Hey, how you doing?
I have a report that I'd like to read from the airport. We have things going on over there that I think is notable, and we should know about it. So on Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, they had sixteen high school students from Phoenix High School at Oswego Airport. These students were handpicked by the councilors at the school for their interest in engineering and vehicle repair. Students arrived at eight-thirty and were greeted by Brandon and the airport staff. They were escorted to the EAA during a presentation by EAA members. Students learned various types of aircraft and multiple opportunities in different career fields of aviation. From the EAA, they went from there to the rope, aeronautical, and aircraft maintenance shop on our field, where Mr. Vogel gave a presentation on the maintenance aspect of aviation. Aircraft mechanics must hold an A and B, airframe and power plant certification to allow to work on airplanes. Mr. Vogel showed students this career opportunity as opposed to automotive repair for diesel engines. Many were unaware of the career opportunity. From the Jeroa, aeronauti, aeronauti, yeah, aeronautical, they went to TruCourse Flight School. TruCourse is the flight school located on the field. While at TruCourse, students were introduced to mechanics of flight and various courses to work on aircraft flight by Mr. Jeff Nannia, owner of TruCourse. They were given the opportunity to fly in a state-of-the-art simulator. All students flew over Oswego and Fulton with only a few incidents. All were very interested in the realistic feel of the simulator. After TruCourse, they went to Mohawk Valley Community College Aviation Program, had a large display set. They are based at the Griffiths Air Force Base in Rome. As part of their display, airport, airplane maintained by students in the class, various turbine and engines, and even jet-powered drog cars, presented students with the information on the A and P program at Rome Airport. At the conclusion of the field trip, the students signed up for Mohawk Valley Community College Program with full knowledge of the demand for aircraft mechanics. These field trips have proven to be a huge success in getting the next generation interested in aviation, whether as a career or a hobby. Students also got with a much better understanding of the airport and our role in our community. During the trip, Axlon utilized our airport to bring in two large jets with multiple executives onboard. Many were unaware that we could accommodate aircraft that size and thought that the airport was mostly for hobbyists. This gave them a chance to see what we do to serve our businesses within the county. All in all, the students, airport attendants, had a fun-filled educational day, and it didn't rain. I'd like to thank Brandon for doing all the work.
Well, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Chairman, if you have a report.
The Chairman asked me to give an update on the National Brain Sanctuary Project. Over the last three nights, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's held public meetings in Lyons, Faridhaven, and Oswego. The final one is occurring right now in Watertown at Jefferson Community College. I've attended all three, and very pleased that all three have been very positively received by the public, with some great comments coming back from the public and ideas coming from them. And I think Noah's done a great job in conveying to the people who attended what this project is really about. It's not just about some divers coming in on shipwrecks, it's really a regional project that touches economic development, education, research, colleges, school kids, and local businesses. And I think a lot of that got conveyed last night based on some of the comments made coming back from members of the public. So, so far, so good. It's going to be a, possibly a two-year process. They will take what the public comment that they received during these meetings and go back to Washington, Michigan, and Georgia, begin developing a proposed management plan, and they'll be, they're going to be in and out of our communities over the next several months, doing more research, verification, meeting with people. And also, the public comment period on this is open until the end of July. You can go online, submit a written comment if you'd like. The event last night was well-attended. Legislators Lockwood, Wilber, Drum, Crowdwell, and Sorevello were there, so I would encourage you to speak with them, to get their impressions of how it went last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Chairman. I also would like to make many people here well aware of our administrator, who also does dive and started this many years ago, and being interested in, through his efforts as Chair of this area of committee, we've got these people coming here, and it's a big thing, if it comes here, we'll have a designation, which will fit right in with our historical events and everything else, and all our geographic wonders that we have all been in the lake. So I want to thank Phil, because he's done a great job now and before, making it well-known about this organization.
Very good. Legislator Wilber. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to update my colleagues in the community on the fact that this past Monday, I was supposed to attend the Lake Ontario Resiliency and Economic Development Commission meeting in Unvalley in Rochester with the governor. There's three hundred million dollars that's going to be available for lakeshore communities regarding our high water levels. I just wanted everybody to know that there's a series of meetings that'll lead up to a development of a plan that'll be due by Labor Day, and the Chairman is putting a team together as we speak on this, something that we're going to be very active on and proactive, I should say, and moving forward and trying to do the best we can for our business. Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Reports of special committees. Moving on, resolutions. Resolution G C one by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution setting standard workdays reporting for elected and appointed officials.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foe's? Carry. Resolution G C two by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution opposing New York State Senate Bill two-eight-three-seven and Assembly Bill two-seven-five-zero.
Yes, in Oswego County, ninety-eight percent of our family farms are fired to family owners, and they apply valuable jobs or products as, you know, consume the news. And if this bill's passed, it would, just the overtime and the cost of races, across the farm, nearly three hundred million, and reduce the net farm income by twenty-three point four percent.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Castillo.
I, I had a lot of thought about this resolution. I called some people, sponsors of these bills, and none of them got back to me. But I've been in other parts of the state and seen how farm workers in other parts of the state are treated. Oswego County is very, very fortunate with farmers that they have here, because they treat their farm workers very, very excellent, and take care of them. But it's not done throughout the whole state, and believe that's why they put this resolution forward. I would rather have them say it's optional for us to accept this in Oswego County versus the others, but they did. And so, I, I, I'm just still torn and won't know until you say, "Oh, but I think you do."
Is there any other discussion? Legislator Wilber will start. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I understand, you know, that he's entitled to his opinion, my colleague is on the other side of the aisle, County Legislature, and I stand with the Oswego County farmers on this. I know it's going to cripple them, it's going to really hurt them. I know you're about ready to hear from a legislator slash farmer, who it's really going to cripple his operation. It's been generations and generations building to where it is today, and I'm standing with the Oswego County agriculture community, and I'm going to vote to oppose this bill that's being presented and all. Thank you. Legislator Sorevello.
Yes, I would just like to bring up a point. They come up with these bills and explain it, yes, everybody thinks that we should have unions and so on, and in agriculture, it's very difficult to work with these kind of situations. We pay our people very well, we give them free housing. For example, let me stick my own, ten people from Mexico we have at our camp, and it's a barracks site, and they're all men. And we farm, we fly them out of Mexico here free of charge. They come here and they work. They want to work longer hours than us, because hours, more hours because of more money. And in many cases, what happens, people got the impression over, over forty should be time and a half. Well, as any business operation, when you get into time and a half, you're paying workers that you're going to somewhat throttle back on and on hours you work. They want to work the hours. When they finish the farm, they go, they get a trip, they go back to Mexico, if that's the case. We just joined what we call H two A program. Everything is tested by everybody. We have trained by the health department, all these things are checked, camps and so on, and we treat them well. You can't treat people rough and uncare what kind of business you're at, but we certainly do not in any way or manner treat these people poorly. They work, they're fine people, and what we're trying to do in agriculture, if we lose, if we put this law in, the New York State farmers will lose, because these people and others like them will go to other states to give more hours and work. And we're talking about greenhouses, we're talking about people in cash stocks like myself, whoever, they will go to other states and work. They won't come here because they want the hours and the things we do. So just so people understand, we do not need unions, just tell them how to do it. They're treated properly, because if we don't treat anybody properly, they're gone. I just want to raise that point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislator, okay.
Yeah, I just want to say, at the end of the day, our constituency is Oswego County. I think we can all agree on that. And the sponsoring Senator for this bill is someone from Queens. She used anecdotal evidence from folks who do have grievances. Not one of them are from Oswego County. You know, yes, if there's things that need to be fixed, that we have to fix them, but it's not done with a universal, you know, let's, let's make a law that's for the whole state, where the nature of our agriculture is different than the nature of agriculture maybe in other counties. So we do need to remember that, and like legislators Sorevello said, in Oswego County, we're talking about often, you know, just a couple of weeks to get, for instance, our products in. And if we start having folks unionize in that time and have job protection at the same time, you're going to have a total loss for that farmer. And so we just need to remember the uniqueness of where we're at, and at the end of the day, we recognize Oswego County.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foe's?
Opposing.
Resolution G C three by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I honor this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution opposing Senate Bill S four-four-two-zero and Assembly Bill A six-four-four-four, which will allow local governments to impose property taxes on golf courses based on highest and best use rather than per increase.
Any other discussion? That's what you're going. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to thank this body for bringing this to the floor tonight. Will Weimer, who owns Stone Creek in, legislative Wilber's district, right? Organized Oswego County golf owners to kind of rally against this bill. It's my understanding that it is up to the discretion of the municipality if this were to move through. I just wanted to say thank you to this body for facilitating this. I think our golf course owners really wanted us to be on the record with this, one way or another, so I just wanted to say that that was appreciated. Will, at death in the family last night, I think he was going to try to keep here to speak in support, but on his behalf, I know him and the golf course owners are glad we're taking this up, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foe's? Carry. Resolution PS one by legislator Wilber. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have followed your resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing legislative modification probation department, STSJP Interactive Journaling.
This is grant money to receive a large pop through Social Services. We're moving it from Social Services into the probation department to spend on this program, which is working with you in our county. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foe's? Carry. Resolution PS two by legislator Wilber. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have followed your resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing reclassification of three positions in the correctional facility administrative office.
We currently have three vacancies. We need to hire, free to fill that position, we're going to hire them at a, this proposes to hire them at a senior registered professional nurses, standings as the current maintenance nursing positions, and this will cover that reclassification. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foe's? Carry. Resolution PS three by legislator Wilber. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have this resolution, urgent adoption. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the creation of two positions and the deletion of two positions in a correctional facility.
I would like to note that the resolution stands correct. However, in the informational memorandum, there's, in the fiscal impact, the surplus is listed as eleven thousand sixty-one dollars. There was a little miscalculation there, it's really ten thousand sixty-three dollars, which will-
It's really $10,063, which will fund 625 hours, approximately 625 hours annual for that position. What we're looking to do is remove a full-time correctional officer and replace the full-time typist, which will replace the full-time typist, which will leave a shortage of 12,000. Deletion of a part-time correctional officer position, 22,000 change will result in surplus of the $10,063. That $10,000 then will fund the request of part-time calculator at the approximate of 625 hours annually.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Castillo.
Look, what I'm saying is, we don't have to amend it because the memorandum by the back of it, the calculations were incorrect. I mean, I voted in favor of it. I'm just talking about the money that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about voting against it or anything. I'm just talking about the money. The money's incorrect, incommitting, and still incorrect on the back of this resolution right now today.
However, you're voting on the front page, which is the resolution, and there are no dollars in the mouths listed on the resolution. All you have are position numbers and what we are creating for the mission.
Thank you. Any other, yes, legislature.
What you vote on is what you're presented with information on. One second. The information we were presented was incorrect at the time. That's all.
Any other? Blue vote for it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolution PS4 by legislator Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution urgent adoption as well.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution creating a nurse practitioner, part-time physician, and medical social worker position correctional facility Sheriff's Department.
As fortunate as we are to have our new doctor, Dr. Newpup, in the jail, he has been very, working very hard and vigorously with the current administration, the sheriff and the other sheriff, and Mr. Benjamin, and they have come up with a wonderful plan to support our health department, I guess you would say medical department in the facility. The proposal that's in front of you is approximately 75,000 for the remainder of the year. What we're going to do is have 31,000 provided for mental health, mental health services. This will lower the overall cost approximately 45,000. Cost in the end will be reduced by the daily needs for transports to the, from the correctional facility to the jail, along with the overtime for deputies to stay in guard when they have inmates who are in the position of being patients at that time. We'll be doing more stuff in housing, not having to utilize our insurance by paying for ambulance rides as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Resolution IT1 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution issuing a credit to the Oswego County IFA Corporation for tipping fees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, whereas this body has previously granted a $100,000 tipping fee credit and discounted ATM tipping fee rates, it was well utilized by the land bank in 2018. We'd like to continue their efforts to improve the communities in 2019.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Castillo.
I asked the same question last year, why we can't offer this to all the municipalities in writing? I know that it's a gentleman's agreement that if a municipality does have a need to be able to get a tipping fee break on asbestos removal, because that's the biggest cost when they're doing demos in their houses, why can't we put it in writing that include all municipalities in here? And last year, I did, you know, an amendment and tried to add it and got voted down. I'm just asking why we can't do it. I mean, it's there, and I voted for it for the grant, you know, for the land bank. I think it's a good idea. It helps get rid of things, but the problem is that there are buildings that municipalities fail to take down because the cost is so high to them that they don't want to do it, and they dwindle and dwindle and dwindle. Before too long, it's given to the land bank, and then the land bank has to take it on to either refurbish it or take it down. And I'm just looking for the municipalities to have the same thing in writing that the land bank is in. That's all I'm asking. Any other?
I do believe there was something in writing for a week ago. I know the county handled it, and they, they took it to themselves, although we did it on either by your base. We got the check of heart.
But I don't see it, I don't see it here, you know, now.
Well, this is just a land bank. This is separate.
That's all I'm asking for. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolution IT2 by legislator Walpole.
Yes, I offer the following resolution urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution accepted in New York State Department Transportation Grant, establishing a capital project to construct a tin bay key hanger at the Oswego County Airport.
As we're all well aware, we have plenty of the updates going on at the airport. The highway department will receive 90% of the state funding, $865,000 for this project. The local share for this project will be $100,000, which will come from highway and appropriate funds.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, go ahead.
Under applicant match, it says 300,000. I just want to clarify that.
Brandon is here.
Can you answer that, Brandon?
The way that we will build the state for it is, we'll be able to charge for the county's equipment, for the baby equipment, for the dump trucks, for the tire and material. The actual additional costs to the county will only be for the materials, for the stone and the asphalt.
The water.
The trucks. It's the same way we build the towns. So, we'll show $300,000, but actual cost to the county will be 100,000.
Thank you, Brandon. Second part of the question. Will this cause a positive bottom line, say, in 48 months?
It's very close. I can't promise that it will cause a positive.
Bottom of the red.
We're well on our way with this. This is a humongous step forward towards that, yes.
Okay. I'm going to cling to that.
Thank you. Legislator Castillo.
I won't be here four years to question it, but right now, I just can't find myself voting yes on something when I've got 54,000 taxpayers out there, and we're only going to take care of 56 people that have got airplanes out there. And I know that at the end of four years, you're still going to be losing somewhere in the neighborhood of $41,000 a year, I think, to this. And I, you know, I just, if it was positive, everything was highly evolved all the way through, I'd say yes to it, but we're putting money into something, and 54,000, 54,000 people are putting it in there, 56 people have got use of it, it's not a service that is rendering to these 54,000 people, and therefore I would not be in favor of this.
We complete the additional spaces being added, and it's well.
Yeah, it'll pay for itself.
It will take care, it will pay, I'm not saying it won't pay for itself in four years. What I'm saying is, during those four years, that $27,000 that you're going to get a year, you're going to put that towards that $100,000. During that time, you're going to lose $68,000 a year. So, at the end of the four years, you're going to take that $27,000 away from the 68, which would mean we're going to lose $41,000 a year still. You're going to need two more hangars to make yourself eat.
Is that, is that your motion? Another? Like your lawyer, Serrano.
Frank, any business, we are a business out there, and to best of my knowledge, when we talk about 10 aircraft, we're talking $225,000 at this point in time per aircraft. So, multiply times 10, that's what that brings in per month, based on when it's paid off. So, it's a business, and it's like any business, you have to have something to make your business grow, and that's what's going on there now. They're doing this to increase. This will bring airplanes somewhere in the vicinity of around 100 aircraft, Brandon?
Yeah, it'll be about 89.
In, on the field, so. They're using facilities. And airport operations in this county, with fuel and hangers as their means of raising money, plus the fact that what we create, non-economic development situation, just bring that point up.
Legislator Castillo.
I, I, not to do a real discussion, because I know we got a lot, a few things before we have, but yes, it's a business, but you, and I know that the term is, if you want to make money, you've got to invest money. Well, we're investing money and we're still losing money. So, if you're going to look at it as a business, you'd say, if I'm going to keep losing money, I'm not going to invest money into it. I'm going to get myself, and I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is it's not looking good, down the road, that you're going to start making money unless you're going to get two more hangars, which is going to be another 16 years before you.
You want a two more hangar, now you want two more.
Two more, it's going to take care of the $27,000, you know.
I think we're failing to look at the additional brotherly, the fuel sales, many of the other things we need to increase.
All right. Legislator, go ahead.
I would love it to do great, I really, really would, but from a business standpoint, the average airport hangar in a small airport in the U.S. is $275, plus $100 for tie-down here. So, we're well, well, well below the average in the, in the median across the U.S. I just feel our costs are low and feel they need to go up. We're doing a tremendous investment. We're maintaining the runway. We're doing everything we can do to make money, but we're giving it away.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Repose.
Resolution IT3 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution establishing capital project number 102, Waterbury Road Bridge over Prince Brook.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As written, this project is necessary to begin work on replacing the superstructure of the bridge, and due to the condition of the steel to the entire superstructure needs to be replaced.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislator Castillo.
Where's the, where's the money coming from for this, for this project?
I want to take some of this value.
It is coming out of the deck, because when I was looking at where you're taking it from, it looked like you didn't have enough money in there, but if you took it out of another area down below it, the tobacco money, you had enough. So, you can take it out of the tobacco money.
Sure. You're probably going to see more of these as we get closer to the end of the tobacco money. We have projects that still need to be done or might need a little more money in them, and we have other tobacco projects that are closing out with balances. So, we're going to be moving those balances into other capital projects so that we maximize the use of that, those tobacco funds. We're getting down, down to the bottom of the barrel, and we have to make sure it's all expended on correct eligible projects. So, the next two or three months, you may see more of these resolutions coming through or taking care of capital projects by moving leftover monies from other tobacco projects.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Resolution IT4 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification to transfer funds from Insurance Recovery Fund into Highway Supplies and Expenses Highway.
As stated, the highway department has recovered $2,432.19 from GEICO and General Insurance Company, and $316 from USAA General Emergency Company for repairs to guide rails and highway signs. So, checks for the positive.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolution IT5 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification to transfer funds from Insurance Recovery Fund into Highway Street Equipment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The highway department has recovered $9,806.88 from Liberty Mutual Insurance Company for a 2012 Western Star Dump and Plow that was involved in a motor vehicle accident.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Resolution IT6, legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification of facilities and technology.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is, is there was some unanticipated activity, such as we had two water main breaks at the public safety, one in the health complex, and there was a heat exchanger at the DSS building, and we needed to upgrade meters within the city of Oswego and Village of Mexico, and these expenses exceeded the budgeted amount. They were not foreseen, and therefore, we're looking at that for the benefit of the county.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Castillo.
Two questions. And the back here says that water departments of City of Oswego and Village of Mexico are requiring remote water mains. I don't understand why we have to, why the county's paying for it.
It's our, our own meter. It's updating it so they can drive by and scan it.
Second, the water main breaks and the, the other, the other complex, the health complex, could that have been taken, done out of the unappropriated fund balance because it's an emergency? It's not something that you could have budgeted for, and he didn't know it was going to happen, but it, you know, it just, it broke, so it should have been an emergency fund and not taken out of the budget when I, when I'm getting at it.
I don't think the emergency fund was, had it on the cover, actually.
Sure. When unanticipated expenses come up, we go to the department account lines first. This is a building repair line in buildings and grounds, and it's there for that type of purpose, which is this year, more happened than has happened in any recent year. So, now, we, in effect, we are covering in one resolution what you're suggesting is taking it, actually making up that difference out of the time allowance. Otherwise, as these occur, we'd be bringing a resolution each time it occurs, taking money out of fund balance rather than out of the department line, and that department line at the end of the year might end up returning money to the fund balance. So, we expend the department lines first. If it gets to a point where that line isn't going to last a year, then we hit fund balance with one resolution.
So, now, those were all taken out, already taken out of the budget. Correct. Okay. That left him $67,000, and he's asking for $48,000 now, which leaves him with a balance of $19,000. Then he wants $50,000 put in there to make it $69,000.
The dollar's worth of this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Repose.
Carried. Thank you. Resolution IT1 by legislator Carr.
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing Oswego County to enter into a proposed central New York and prohibited ecological alliance intermunicipal agreement.
Pretty good job of saying that word.
This, this is an agreement that we had with surrounding counties.
It's expired, and we need to review it, and to bring the whole thing down into a nutshell, if we had a serious crisis, we could call upon these other counties to come and assist us. They can call on us. The following counties that are in this are Cayuga, Portland, Jefferson, Lewis, Madison, Onadaga, Tompkins, and us. So, and once the crisis is over, then they pay reimbursed the county back for the services that they give.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Resolution HE2 by legislator Carr.
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Health Department, New York State Regulations, Staff Compliance Due to Measles Health Break.
Actually, it's pretty self-explanatory. We need to order another 60 doses of vaccine.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both. Carrie. Resolution IT five by legislator Crass.
This is the most I've had to stand up since I took chair of this committee. Uh, Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the correction of titles in the budget of two positions in the health department.
So when we did the budget, a couple of titles, uh, then transferred over to the new system, all it is is changing, uh, the titles to correct a problem, there's no money, no financial, uh, just, just changing the title.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carrie. Resolution HS one by legislator Rehill.
Mr. Chairman, after the following resolution, urgent to that.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
She's under his chair.
Resolution warning professional services contract department of social services workforce development board.
Uh, this is something that we do annually, work with the workforce development board to administer and advise, uh, how we spend our federal and state, uh, monies that come in for, uh, workforce development. There is a budget increase, uh, of three-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-nine dollars that will come up at the next, at the end for the next budget, uh, but we also believe that that is gonna be covered by an increase in reimbursement from the federal.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carrie, thank you. Resolution FP one by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, urgent to that.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing professional services contract treasurer's office investment analysis.
Uh, thank you. This, this resolution is to, um, basically, uh, the service to provide proprietary reports and data that can be used internally and externally to achieve higher income on our low and non-performing operating dollars while adhering to our specific legal safe, safety and liquidity of our assets and how we do our investments. Treasurer Governor is here to answer any questions beyond. We are guaranteed return on our investments here, um, or it's no cost to us.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Castillo.
Two questions. Is that nine thousand dollars the only fee we're gonna have to pay?
Should there be a continuation at the company if they do find the savings, it's a quarter of a percent.
So a quarter of a percent.
So it's two hundred and fifty dollars from every million dollars that may help us, uh, achieve.
Where's the nine thousand dollars gonna come from?
From an consulting contract in my, uh, in my budget.
All right, because it didn't say anything here.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's my, sorry about that.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, legislator Walco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules for three resolutions, two pertaining to fixing the time and place of public hearings, and one, uh, resolution adopting policy regarding the, uh, displaying disposal flags.
Okay, thank you. Yes. We need a second.
Second.
Second by legislator Crass. Okay, I don't have to, the question number is off. Legislator Holt. Oh, my bad, my bad, Carrie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carrie. Legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urgent to that.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution fixing time and place for public hearing relative to proposed county Oswego local law number one of the year twenty-nineteen entitled, "Local Law Bringing An Exemption From The General and Valerian Taxation, Special and Valerian Loveies and Special Assessments as Provided Under Real Property Tax Law forty-five and four-ninety Regarding The James Eighth Fitzpatrick Facility."
Thank you. Does this public hearing will be held on the twenty-sixth of June, uh, Friday through the weekend? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carrie. Thank you. Legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urgent to that.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution fixing time and place for public hearing relative to a proposed tax agreement under real property tax law forty-five concerning the James Eighth Fitzpatrick facility owned by Exelon Fitzpatrick LLC.
So draft agreement, which will be held on the twenty-sixth of June, as, uh, I was ready to be in.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carrie. Thank you again. Legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution, urgent to that.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution adopting policy regarding the display of disposal of flags.
Because we're gonna have places so that people can bring in their, their flags from the provident's hole. We already have one down here, and we're gonna provide them with the banter station so they can understand. And she does have to be remembered, um, and, uh, three are G to all the flags that have been purchased and to be made in the neighborhood.
I'll second the motion. Seconding the motion by legislator Walco.
Just so it's clear that, um, section three, letter G, it's going to direct the county departments to purchase all flags that have been verified that they're made in our.
That is, so, everybody understands we're going on first, we gotta go on the amendment. Okay. Any discussion on amendments?
I have one question. If we check the flags out, find any that are not made in the original.
Yeah, we're good, right?
So, okay.
I think, I, I think from what I have to find any references, I have questions.
So I think from what I have told that most of them.
Oh, oh, I, oh, I, oh, I, but for most of all, okay.
Very good, so, it's the amendment first. Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carrie, now the original motion. So we know again, you've seen that? Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carrie, thank you. Any unfinished business?
Legislator Castillo. I, I don't know if it's unfinished or new business, I was just wondering, are we, is there any possibility that we can continue with, uh, evening meetings in summertime as we have the past two years? Is that up for discussion, up for vote, or up for, uh? I said something and it really is, or what?
I would offer that it's under consideration. Any other discussion? Thank you. Under miscellaneous business, this is what you've been waiting for, Frank, so stand and count.
I got my camera ready, I called the news, everybody.
Gee, thanks. I totally understand if it gets kinda long-winded and boring and everybody runs for the door, so, I won't take it personal.
We got four and a half hours left on the chip, so you're good.
Well anyways, yeah, Gardner, you're laughing now. Good afternoon, evening, welcome. As I celebrate my sixth year as a member of this distinguished body, I'd like to begin my remarks by recognizing our six colleagues who have decided to focus on other important aspects of their lives and as a result will not be seeking reelection as county legislators. I tip my hat to each of you and ask everyone here today to join me in thanking them for their service to our community. I would like to ask legislators Margaret Kessler, Milford Potter, Shane Broadwell, who is absent, excused, Heather Delconte, Daniel Forfallia, and Frank Castillo to stand and be recognized. Having been here longer than some of you and nowhere near as close for as long as some others, I know the work and commitment that is required to do a good job representing the citizens of Oswego County, and while there is still work for you to do in the remainder of your terms, I thank you personally and on behalf of our citizenry for your service and wish you all the best of luck in your next endeavors. In the six years that I've been here, I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of experienced and knowledgeable, some of them way more knowledgeable than me, uh, people from both the public and private sectors, from the average citizen to the local business owner, corporate executives, and a wide variety of local, state, and federal officials. I've learned a lot over this short period, but one thing that stands out through all these conversations and experiences is our common goal of trying our best to make Oswego County a better place to live, work, and raise a family. A lot has happened while I have been here, not because I have been here, but rather because we've learned to work together on some common fronts instead of staying in our individual silos. State, local, and federal representatives, healthcare professionals, school districts, businesses, and not-for-profit agencies, all at the same table trying to improve the business environment, enhance the educational opportunities, and elevate the overall quality of life. In addition to the good work that our staff and management teams, uh, teams do from day to day, I've witnessed progress through projects like the anti-poverty task force, the shared services panel, our new focus on economic development efforts, school and healthcare collaborations, and many other progressive and proactive initiatives successfully beginning to move the needle as my predecessor Chairman Broadwell was fond of saying. But now is not the time for us to pause, as much remains to be done. Working together and tapping the resources of our local and regional partners in both the public and private sectors, we can and will continue to move forward. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I've been honored to have the opportunity over these last six years to serve the residents of Oswego County as a legislator from the ninth district, and even more so now as the chairman. I hope you know how pleased and grateful I am to have your support and confidence. I'd also like to thank my colleagues in the legislature who support me and you day in and day out as we take on the challenges of efficiently and effectively meeting the expectations of our citizens. I would also like to acknowledge our municipal, business, and education partners from throughout Oswego County who work with us to meet these goals. Without communication between and cooperation among all these various leaders across our county and region, our chances to progress and grow more become significantly diminished. We must also recognize our management staff and their respective teams, all of whom are key to our ability to implement our strategies and deliver the services you have all come to enjoy. And finally, a heartfelt thanks to those local, state, and federal partners who couldn't be here today, but without them we could not take on many of the challenges we are confronted with. Let me start by providing a snapshot of where we are in Oswego County relative to our financial obligations, our resources, and what we do with those throughout the year to serve our residents and businesses. While it varies slightly from year to year, our annual budget is about two-hundred million. Of that, roughly eighty percent or one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-six million in the twenty-nineteen budget of roughly two-hundred-nine-point-five million pays for state and federal mandates. To help cover this cost, the state gives us thirty-four-point-four million, and the feds give us twenty-six-point-three. That's sixty-point-seven million, or thirty-six percent of the one-hundred-and-sixty-seven million in mandated costs. We pay for the rest, which is one-hundred-and-forty-nine million mandated and non-mandated through property tax, pilots, sales tax, fund balance, and other miscellaneous revenues. The other category is important to understand because the amount of revenue generated there very closely matches the cost of all our non-mandated programs combined. It is also worth noting that some of the costs for non-mandated services come from our residents' expressed desire to have certain amenities available to them. In those cases, we try to offset the cost of these programs with user fees, so only those people who use that service are charged for it, not the general public or only those who own property. We also work to maximize the value of the work we do and where possible generate revenue from those activities. An example is a division of solid waste. It's the guy with a broken hand that. In twenty-eighteen, the department landfilled almost sixty-two thousand tons of ash and waste collected, sorted, and sold over nine thousand tons of recycled materials and helped six-hundred-and-ninety-nine residents safely dispose of twenty-five tons of household waste. In addition, through the sale of various recyclable materials as well as electricity and steam produced at the energy recovery facility, we generated just over a million dollars from our operations. Efficiencies such as these are important as we try to contain the cost of serving more than one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand residents spread across almost a thousand square miles. I think it's important for all of us to understand our county budget, both the revenue and expense sides, because the more we all know about what we do, why we do it, and how it gets paid for, the more we can participate in plans to make things better. The first step in that process is understanding that as hard as we work to keep your county taxes as low as possible, we actually only have control over about twenty percent of our annual spending, a number that is coincidentally very similar to that part of our revenue stream that comes from local, county, and property taxes. Currently, the generic county property tax rate is seven dollars and seventy cents per a thousand dollars of assessed value. It's about twenty percent lower than it was fifteen years ago, even though our costs continue to rise. So far, through careful attention to detail, we have managed to keep it steady at that rate for the last four years. When you apply that rate to the median home value in the county, the average homeowner is paying roughly seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars a year in county property tax. As the chairman of the legislature, it's imperative that I know how these funds are being spent. As a fellow taxpayer, I think it's helpful to understand what I'm getting for my money so that I can act as a more informed and responsible member of the community. So let's take a look at what the average taxpayer gets for just over seven-hundred bucks a year. Last year, our highway department paved sixty-five miles of county roads and ten parking lots. They completed three bridges while maintaining miles of roadside trees, signs, and culverts. In twenty-eighteen, the Department of Facilities and Technology installed new roofs on this building and the courthouse next door. They completed a window project here and renovated the district attorney's office. At Camp Hollis, they installed electric and water at the pavilion, renovated the nurse's office, the camp office, and added a handicap bathroom in the main lodge. In addition, they added new roofs, windows, and siding on two of the guest cabins. Their plans for twenty-nineteen include renovations to our RT department, a new roof at the Plaski courthouse, new, uh, heating, ventilation, air conditioning upgrades at the public safety center in the Fulton office building, a new ceiling and LED lighting in the main camp cabin at Camp Hollis, exterior brickwork on this building, I'm sure you've seen, and the expansion of the record center and Oswego motor vehicle office. The Office of the Clerk of the Legislature has been working towards improving public access by making legislative and jurisdictional committee meetings available online for public viewing and preparing documents, archiving for the release of the new county website. They also processed one-hundred-and-twenty-eight requests for public information in twenty-eighteen. And in our role of protecting consumers, the Office of Ways and Measures completed four-hundred-and-one inspections, tested nineteen-hundred-and-three devices, and responded to various complaints from concerned consumers in the county. Meanwhile, the county clerk's office, a significant contributor to the other revenue category I mentioned, issued eight-hundred-and-eight business certificates, processed six-eight-hundred-and-fifteen mortgage-related documents, five-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-eight deed-related documents, completed ten-thousand-and-eighty-eight pistol permit transactions, and one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine motor vehicle transactions. Also located in the Bridge Street office building, our real property office, with a relatively small staff, generated fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six tax, excuse me, tax bills, processed three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-one sales, generated almost four-thousand dollars from the sale of tax maps, and raised over two-point-two million dollars from the sale of one-hundred-and-twenty-four properties in their annual auction. It's a sixty percent increase from the previous year. Equally as busy is our human resources office. With just a handful of staff members, they provide service to our school districts, towns, villages, and special districts, last, and last year handled nearly sixteen-thousand-two-hundred employee transactions of various forms. Rounding out the departments in the legislative office building, Department of Community Development, Tourism and Planning, busy spreading the news about all that happens here. Twenty-eighteen, staff and volunteers participated in a dozen trade shows throughout New York, Canada, and surrounding states, hosted nearly three dozen press visits and tours for travel writers and other public relations professionals, including hosting the spring, spring conference of the New York Outdoor Writers Association. They wrote and distributed over three-hundred press releases, ran about a hundred print ads in local, state, and national publications, many of which were supported with radio and social media campaigns, reaching over seven-hundred-thousand users, and they distributed over sixty-thousand brochures.
Sir. When any unanticipated expenses come up, we go to the department account lines first. And this is a building repair line in buildings and grounds, uh, and it's there for that type of purpose, which is this year more happened than has happened in any recent year. Uh, so now we, in, in fact, uh, we are covering in one resolution what you're suggesting is taking it, actually making up that difference on the time of balance. Otherwise, as these occur, we'd be bringing a, a resolution each time it occurs, taking money out of fund balance rather than out of the department line. In that, department line at the end of the year might end up returning money to the fund balance anyway. So we expend the department lines first. If it gets to a point where that line isn't gonna last a year, then we hit fund balance with one resolution.
So now, those were all taken out, already taken out of the budget?
Correct.
Okay. That left him sixty-seven thousand dollars, and he's asking for forty-eight thousand dollars now, which leaves him with a balance of nineteen thousand dollars. And he wants- And he wants $50,000 put in there, leaving him with $69,000 to go through this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both?
One of both.
Okay, thank you. Resolution AT1. My legislator correct?
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution to your consideration.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing Oswego County to enter into a proposed central New York African Meteorological Alliance Intermunicipal Agreement.
Pretty good job saying that word. This is an agreement that we've had with surrounding counties. It's expired, and we need to review it. And to bring the whole thing down into a nutshell, is if we had a serious crisis, we could call upon these other counties to come and assist us. They could call on us. The following counties that are in this are Cayuga, Portland, Jefferson, Lewis, Madison, Onadaga, Tompkins, and us. So, and once the crisis is over, then they pay reimbursement back for the services that they give us.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie, thank you. Resolution HE2, my legislator correct?
Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution to your consideration.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing Budgetary Modification Health Department, New York State Regulations Staff Compliance Due to Measles Health Breaker.
Actually, it's pretty self-explanatory. We need to order another 60 doses of vaccine.
Thank you. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie. Resolution HE5, my legislator correct?
This is enough that had to stand up since the chair is to me. Mr. Chairman, fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution to your consideration.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing Correction of Titles in the Budget of Two Positions in the Health Department.
So when we did the budget, a couple of titles didn't transfer over to the new system. All it is is changing the titles to correct a problem. There's no money, no financial, just changing the title.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie. Resolution HS1, my legislator, Rehill.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution or adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
She's under his chair.
Resolution warning professional services contract, Department of Social Services, Workforce Development Board.
This is something that we do annually. We'll work with the Workforce Development Board to administer and advise how we spend our federal and state monies that come in for workforce development. There is a budget increase of $3,979 that will come up at the end for the next budget, but we also believe that that is going to be covered by an increase in reimbursement from the federal.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie. Resolution FP1, my legislator, Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry to lose you. Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing Professional Services Contract, Treasurer's Office Investment Analysis.
Thank you. This resolution is to display the service to provide proprietary reports and data that can be used internally and externally to achieve higher income on power, low and non-performing operating dollars, while adhering to our specific legal safety and liquidity of our assets and how we do our investments. Treasurer, however, is here to answer any questions beyond. We are guaranteed return on our investments here, or it's no cost to us.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislators, please.
Two questions. Is that $9,000 the only fee we're going to have to pay?
There'll be a continuation at the company if they do find the savings. It's a quarter of a percent. So $250 from every $9,000 that may help us. Three dollars basically.
Where's the $9,000 going to come from?
From a consulting directive in my budget.
It didn't say it in here.
Yeah, that's my...
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. My legislator, Wilbur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules for three resolutions: two pertaining to fixing the time and place of public hearings, and one, resolution adopting policy regarding the displaying the disposal of flags.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we need a second.
Second.
Second, I need a legislator's opinion.
I was going to sleep over here.
Okay, I don't have to... legislator Holt. Oh, my bad, my bad, Carrie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie. My legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution or just adopt.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution fixing time and place for public hearing relative to proposed County Oswego Local Law Number One of the year 2019 entitled "Local Law Grandion and Exemption from the General and Valorem Taxation, Special and Valorem Loveys and Special Assessments" is provided under Real Property Tax Law 45 and 490 regarding the James Apes Fitzpatrick Facility.
Thank you. This public hearing will be held on the 46th of June, Friday, Tuesday. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie. Thank you. My legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution or just adopt.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution fixing time and place for public hearing relative to a proposed tax agreement under Real Property Tax Law 45 concerning the James Apes Fitzpatrick Facility owned by Exelon Fitzpatrick LLC.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie. Thank you again. My legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution or just adopt.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution adopting policy regarding the displaying and disposal of flags.
Because we're going to have places so that people can bring in their flags from the Providence Hulk. We already have one down here, and we're going to try to get them at the Vanquisher's Station so that they can understand. And we should have the... and the three or three of all the flags that... purchasing will be made in the...
I'll second the motion. Seconding the motion, my legislator, Wilbur.
Just so it's clear that Section 3, Leonard G., is going to direct the county departments to purchase all flags that have been verified that they have been made in our...
Thank you. So, everybody understands we're going on first. We've got to go on the amendment. Okay. Any discussion on the amendments?
I have one question. If we check the flags now and find any that are not made in our...
Okay. I'm just asking.
I think from what I...
If I ask any questions, they have questions.
No, I think from what I've been told, that most of them...
Oh, no, no, no. Most of them are...
Very good, so, it's the amendment first. Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie, now the original motion. So we know again, you've seen that? Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carrie. Thank you. Any unfinished business?
I don't know if it's unfinished or new business. I was just wondering, is there any possibility that we can continue with evening meetings in the summertime as we have the past two years? Is that up for discussion, up for vote, or up for... I said something and it leads, or what?
I would offer that it's under consideration. Any other discussion? Thank you. Under miscellaneous business, this is what you've been waiting for, Frank.
Yeah, yeah. I got my camera ready. I called the news, everybody.
Gee, thanks. I totally understand if it gets kind of long-winded and boring and everybody runs for the door, so I won't take it personal.
We've got four and a half hours left on the chip, so you're good.
Well, anyways, yeah, Gardner, you're laughing now. Good afternoon, evening, welcome. As I celebrate my sixth year as a member of this distinguished body, I'd like to begin my remarks by recognizing our six colleagues who have decided to focus on other important aspects of their lives and as a result will not be seeking reelection as county legislators. I tip my hat to each of you and ask everyone here today to join me in thanking them for their service to our community. I would like to ask legislators Margaret Kessler, Milford Potter, Shane Broadwell, who is absent, excused, Heather Delconte, Daniel Farfalia, and Frank Castillo to stand and be recognized. Having been here longer than some of you and nowhere near as close for as long as some others, I know the work and commitment that is required to do a good job representing the citizens of Oswego County. And while there is still work for you to do in the remainder of your terms, I thank you personally and on behalf of our citizenry for your service and wish you all the best of luck in your next endeavors. In the six years that I've been here, I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of experienced and knowledgeable, some of them way more knowledgeable than me, people from both the public and private sectors, from the average citizen to the local business owner, corporate executives, and a wide variety of local, state, and federal officials. I've learned a lot over this short period, but one thing that stands out through all these conversations and experiences is our common goal of trying our best to make Oswego County a better place to live, work, and raise a family. A lot has happened while I have been here, not because I have been here, but rather because we've learned to work together on some common fronts instead of staying in our individual silos. State, local, and federal representatives, healthcare professionals, school districts, businesses, and not-for-profit agencies, all at the same table trying to improve the business environment, enhance the educational opportunities, and elevate the overall quality of life. In addition to the good work that our staff and management teams do from day to day, I've witnessed progress through projects like the Anti-Poverty Task Force, the Shared Services Panel, our new focus on economic development efforts, school and healthcare collaborations, and many other progressive and proactive initiatives successfully beginning to move the needle, as my predecessor Chairman Broadwell was fondly saying. But now is not the time for us to pause, as much remains to be done. Working together and tapping the resources of our local and regional partners in both the public and private sectors, we can and will continue to move forward. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I've been honored to have the opportunity over these last six years to serve the residents of Oswego County as a legislator from the Ninth District, and even more so now as the chairman. I hope you know how pleased and grateful I am to have your support and confidence. I'd also like to thank my colleagues in the legislature who support me and you day in and day out as we take on the challenges of efficiently and effectively meeting the expectations of our citizens. I would also like to acknowledge our municipal, business, and education partners from throughout Oswego County who work with us to meet these goals. Without communication between and cooperation among all these various leaders across our county and region, our chances to progress and grow more become significantly diminished. We must also recognize our management staff and their respective teams, all of whom are key to our ability to implement our strategies and deliver the services you have all come to enjoy. And finally, a heartfelt thanks to those local, state, and federal partners who couldn't be here today, but without them we could not take on many of the challenges we are confronted with. Let me start by providing a snapshot of where we are in Oswego County relative to our financial obligations, our resources, and what we do with those throughout the year to serve our residents and businesses. While it varies slightly from year to year, our annual budget is about 200 million. Of that, roughly eighty percent or 167.6 million in the 2019 budget of roughly 209.5 million pays for state and federal mandates. To help cover this cost, the state gives us 34.4 million and the feds give us 26.3. That's 60.7 million, or thirty-six percent of the 167 million in mandated costs. We pay for the rest, which is 149 million mandated and non-mandated through property tax, pilots, sales tax, fund balance, and other miscellaneous revenues. The other category is important to understand because the amount of revenue generated there very closely matches the cost of all our non-mandated programs combined. It is also worth noting that some of the costs for non-mandated services come from our residents' expressed desire to have certain amenities available to them. In those cases, we try to offset the costs of these programs with user fees, so only those people who use that service are charged for it, not the general public, or only those who own property. We also work to maximize the value of the work we do and where possible generate revenue from those activities. An example is a division of solid waste. It's the guy with a broken hand that... In 2018, the department landfilled almost 62,000 tons of ash and waste, collected, sorted, and sold over 9,000 tons of recycled materials and helped 699 residents safely dispose of 25 tons of household waste. In addition, through the sale of various recyclable materials as well as electricity and steam produced at the Energy Recovery Facility, we generated just over a million dollars from our operations. Efficiencies such as these are important as we try to contain the cost of serving more than 120,000 residents spread across almost 1,000 square miles. I think it's important for all of us to understand our county budget, both the revenue and expense sides, because the more we all know about what we do, why we do it, and how it gets paid for, the more we can participate in plans to make things better. The first step in that process is understanding that as hard as we work to keep our county taxes as low as possible, we actually only have control over about twenty percent of our annual spending, a number that is coincidentally very similar to that part of our revenue stream that comes from local, county, and property taxes. Currently, the generic county property tax rate is $7.70 per $1,000 of assessed value. It's about twenty percent lower than it was 15 years ago, even though our costs continue to rise. So far, through careful attention to detail, we have managed to keep it steady at that rate for the last four years. When you apply that rate to the median home value in the county, the average homeowner is paying roughly $713 a year in county property tax. As the chairman of the legislature, it's imperative that I know how these funds are being spent. As a fellow taxpayer, I think it's helpful to understand what I'm getting for my money so that I can act as a more informed and responsible member of the community. So let's take a look at what the average taxpayer gets for just over 700 bucks a year. Last year, our highway department paved 65 miles of county roads and 10 parking lots. They completed three bridges while maintaining miles of roadside trees, signs, and culverts. In 2018, the Department of Facilities and Technology installed new roofs on this building and the courthouse next door. They completed a window project here and renovated the district attorney's office. At Camp Hollis, they installed electric and water at the pavilion, renovated the nurse's office, the camp office, and added a handicap bathroom in the main lodge. In addition, they added new roofs, windows, and siding on two of the guest cabins. Their plans for 2019 include renovations to our RT department, a new roof at the Plaski Courthouse, new heating, ventilation, air conditioning upgrades at the Public Safety Center in the Fulton Office Building, a new ceiling and LED lighting in the main cabin at Camp Hollis, exterior brickwork on this building, I'm sure you've seen, and the expansion of the Record Center and the Oswego Motor Vehicle Office. The Office of the Clerk of the Legislature has been working towards improving public access by making legislative and jurisdictional committee meetings available online for public viewing and preparing documents, archiving for the release of the new county website. They also processed 128 requests for public information in 2018. And in our role of protecting consumers, the Office of Waits and Measures completed 401 inspections, tested 1,903 devices, and responded to various complaints from concerned consumers in the county. Meanwhile, the County Clerk's Office, a significant contributor to the other revenue category I mentioned, issued 808 business certificates, processed 6,815 mortgage-related documents, 5,468 deed-related documents, completed 10,088 pistol permit transactions, and 171,000... ten-thousand-and-eighty-eight pistol permit transactions, and one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine motor vehicle transactions. Also located in the Bridge Street Office Building, our real property office, with a relatively small staff, generated fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six tax bills, processed three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-one sales, generated almost four-thousand dollars from the sale of tax maps, and raised over two-point-two-million dollars from the sale of one-hundred-and-twenty-four properties in their annual auction. It's a sixty percent increase from the previous year. Equally as busy is our Human Resources Office. With just a handful of staff members, they provide service to our school districts, towns, villages, and special districts, and last year handled nearly sixteen-thousand-two-hundred employee transactions of various forms. Rounding out the departments in the Legislative Office Building, Department of Community Development, Tourism, and Planning, busy spreading the news about all that happens here. Twenty-eighteen, staff and volunteers participated in a dozen trade shows throughout New York, Canada, and surrounding states, hosted nearly three dozen press visits and tours for travel writers and other public relations professionals, including hosting the Spring Conference of the New York Outdoor Writers Association. They wrote and distributed over three-hundred press releases, ran about a hundred print ads in local, state, and national publications, many of which were supported with radio and social media campaigns, reaching over seven-hundred-thousand users, and they distributed over sixty-thousand brochures. Legislator Wilber. Legislator Holt. Any discussion? All in favor of the jury?
Aye.